If everyone could please take their seats. I would, I would like to remind the board members as we go through this, you need to be on the Teams meeting in order to put in a request to speak and on the board docs for when we're voting. But for this time, we're going to be voting by roll call, so it's not as important, but to be on board docs. Okay, so the Thursday, January 14th, 2021 special meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board will now come to order. I will read in a few items. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% of capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission to the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The special meeting scheduled for January 14th, 2021, at 6:30 PM will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on board docs located on the school board's website, A period for written public comment will be provided before the meeting, as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in board docs and submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. Online comments are available for public review. And I would also like to add for the public, both in, online and here physically, that we will be doing, having public input before we take the vote, and we will be reading the online comments, even though we're not required to, we will be reading the online comments related to the superintendent's selection. Now, we will have one stipulation, though, we still, for the in-person, we still have the three-minute limit, we still have the limits on the online comments, and people, the public will only be allowed one comment. So if you're in person and you put in an online comment, you only get one comment. If you're online, you can't put in multiple comments, you will only get one comment. That's the same rule we've always had for the, for the in-person comments. So I just wanted to be very clear with everyone on that procedure. Is there any questions from the board about that procedures? Yes, sir, Mr. Tatman.
It may, it may be user error, but I'm having a hard time finding the special meeting on Teams.
On the Teams meeting, there's only one meeting, so the cow and the team will be the same.
So you just committee the whole?
Yes.
Okay.
On the board docs, there are two meetings. Okay, does everyone have that? If it was simple, we wouldn't.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So now, we will, I will, let's see, the first item on the agenda, and the only item on the agenda, is discussion?
Roll call, Mr. Blue.
Roll call. I keep forgetting the roll call, I'm sorry. You're gonna need to get a new president soon. Madam Secretary, would you please conduct a roll call?
District 7, President Godey.
Here.
District 3, Vice President Howard.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Present.
District 4, Ms. Collins.
Present.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
District 9, Mr. Tatman.
Present.
And, and for those of the audience who are just joining us, we did the invocation and pledge of allegiance before the prior meeting. So with that, we now go to item C1, discussion, consideration of candidates for the superintendent of schools and related matters. Ms. Dyson.
I move the selection of the superintendent of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System be conducted as follows. Any board member may place into consideration the name of any finalist. If more than one person is nominated for the superintendent position, a vote by board member district shall be taken after nominations are closed. All school board members may vote for only one nominee. If a nominee receives the votes of a majority of the members of the total school board on the first ballot, the nominee shall be declared selected. If no nominee receives a majority of the votes of the total school board on the first ballot, a second vote shall be taken between the two nominees receiving the most votes. If there is a tie vote between more than two candidates for the highest number of votes, or between two or more candidates for the second highest number of votes, all such candidates shall be included in the runoff selection. If, in the runoff selection, the nominee receiving the greatest number of votes shall be declared selected, provided however, that such nominee must have received the vote of a majority of the total school board. In the event of a tie vote, or in the event of no nominee receiving the favorable vote of a majority of the total school board, voting shall continue until a nominee receives the vote of a majority of this total school board. After final selection of a nominee for superintendent of schools for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, board leadership in consultation with general counsel is authorized to negotiate and execute a contract with said nominee.
The motion has been made, is there a second? Second by Mr. Tatman. Thank you. We will now go to the board, and I'm trying to get up here. Are there any board members who would like to speak on this subject before we go to the public?
Yes.
No, this, this is on the process, yes, this is on the process. Seeing no comments from the board, are there any comments from the public on the process? Dr. Finney.
Thank you. I believe you should exclude from eligibility for nomination, anyone who is not eligible for licensure as a superintendent in the state of Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from the audience? Vice President Howard and Board Secretary, do you see any comments online for this item? I believe we're clear? So we will go back to the board, are there any comments from the board on the procedural item? Are you guys okay? Seeing no comments? Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Yeah, I'm having trouble getting mine to come up. We can, we can just do a roll call? Madam Secretary, can, can you please just conduct a roll call vote?
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
District 3, Vice President Howard?
Yes.
District 4, Ms. Collins?
Yay.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Godey?
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
District 9, Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We've now set the motion, so at, at this point, I will open the floor for nominations for superintendent from the semi-final, some of the finalist candidates. Mr., Mr. Blue?
Yeah, I'll nominate Sito Narcisse.
Board Member Collins?
I nominate Adam Smith.
Are there any other nominations? Motion to close nominations, is there a second to the motion? Mr. Lannis, seconds? Madam Secretary, would you like to conduct a roll call, or? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any comments from the board on the motion to close nominations? Any comments from the audience on the vote to close nominations? And I see no online comments.
Mr. Godey, who made the motion on the?
Mr. Tatman made the motion to close, and Mr. Lannis gave the second. Back to the board, any comments from the board on closing nominations? Seeing none. Madam Secretary?
District 1, Mr. Blue?
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
District 3, Vice President Howard?
Yes.
District 4, Ms. Collins? To close the nominations. District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
District 7, President Godey?
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
District 9, Mr. Tatman?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we will proceed to the selection of the superintendent. Given the procedure that has been applied, the nominees for this election are Dr. Narcisse and Mr. Smith. The process includes a vote by the board, I will call for a roll call vote by the board on this selection, and so, Madam Secretary, can we, can you please conduct the roll call? No, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get, so, I'm sorry, it's been a long, long couple of days. Would the, are there any comments from the board on the select, on the two candidates?
I would like to go ahead and express where I placed Adam Smith in nomination. I've been a board member in this district for four, going on five years, and I'm big on reaching out to everyone on every level, so my principals, parents at schools, community stakeholders, district staff, and of course, superintendents, the superintendent, and, and I do that so I can get a good grip on what's going on, so that when we vote on things, or when I vote on things, I'm not walking blind. And over the years, there's one staff member that, when I reach out, he can explain it from the bottom, period, and he, and he explains it with, he illustrates it with personal story, but is fact-laden, you know, and he's kind, and he's humble, and he's the kind of leadership that people can trust, because while he's kind and humble, he holds people accountable, and he is someone who's gotten results in this district, that's why the community trusts him. And, and he is innovative, innovative, he has come up in a traditional, traditional district, excuse me, but as you hear him illustrate his stories, how many principals would get on, on the intercom and have a silly time with another student to get the children in the building so they could stop failing first, period? That's innovative, okay, that's about as innovative as anything I've heard anybody from anywhere else come up with, and it was effective, and it got the job done, so I'm proud and I'm honored to nominate Adam Smith tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Please, I ask the audience to refrain, are there any other comments from any other board members? There's nothing on the meeting room chat, so now we will open to the in-person comments, if there are people who would like to speak in person? Have we, we've passed out comment cards? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Belinda Davis, and I'm here as a member of the Louisiana Board of Elementary and Secondary Education right now. I want to let you know that I am opposed to granting waivers of qualifications for superintendents, and my position is consistent. It doesn't matter if you're trying to be the superintendent of the state of Louisiana, or the superintendent of an individual school district. Time in a classroom and in the school building is an essential component of being a successful superintendent. Hiring a chief academic officer cannot replace the trust that you lose with teachers by hiring someone who does not have significant time in a classroom, and it cannot replace the lived experience of implementing district policies in your own classroom. You will be hard-pressed to find a greater advocate for the children of the East Baton Rouge Parish Public School System on Bessie than I am, and because of that, I believe that our children and our teachers deserve a fully qualified superintendent. I will not vote to approve a waiver request should you choose a candidate that requires one. Now Bessie Belinda is gone, now I'm speaking to you as the president of one community, one school district, the mom and the legal guardian of three children in your district, and a 2020 graduate of your district. When you look at these two individuals on paper, there are a lot of similarities when it comes to their experiences, both have worked in turnaround schools, both have extensive administrative experience, both have a record of increasing student achievement, but there are two important ways that they depart from one another. First, Mr. Adam Smith is qualified to be a superintendent under Louisiana statute, Dr. Narcisse is not. Second, there's a difference between ambition, and ambition coupled with devotion. Dr. Narcisse left the classroom after only three years. Since he left the classroom, every administration position he has held has been held for less than three years. He has been in seven school districts. Dr. Narcisse was a finalist in three superintendent searches two years prior to his move to DC. He got to Nashville, and in two years was always, already plotting his next move. He's been in DC less than two years, and he's plotting a potential move here. Contrast that with Adam Smith, who has spent his entire career in our district. While Dr. Narcisse has ambition, Mr. Smith has ambition coupled with devotion to his district. That's why so many people are here tonight despite the threat to their health, because Mr. Smith's talent, his expertise, and his devotion to our district make him worthy of his, our support. And for those of you who are worried about change, to quote Grace Lee Boggs, a civil rights activist, she once said, "How can you understand change when you're always on the move? The most radical thing I ever did was stay put." Mr. Smith understands what changes are needed in our district because he knows our district. Do the right thing and make him our next superintendent, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Finney.
Thank you, I have a letter that I will read into the record on behalf of 46 signatories. Dear East Baton Rouge School Board Members, unfortunately, here we are again. We would like to start by saying that we hope Leslie Brown is in recovery and good health. We appreciate you listening to the community in her selection, and hope you will act similarly with this upcoming vote. Having done due diligence on the candidates, we have been pleasantly surprised at the quality of the three finalists. The experience and credentials of Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Narcisse are impressive, and although we believe both will make fine superintendents one day, we are in adamant support of Adam Smith to lead our district. This has been the overwhelming message of our stakeholders from day one. He has the temperament and experience and can hit the ground running. The learning curve in any new position is at least one year, especially for one so immense as superintendent of a school district. We are in unprecedented times, and the detriment of someone from outside of our community coming in is not something we can bear at this time. Unlike someone new to our community, we have a very clear picture in what Adam Smith brings to the table with no surprises. This does not mean he cannot bring a fresh vision, as we are confident he has numerous ideas he wants to implement that he has learned from his decades of service. We know exactly what we are getting with Adam Smith. He has the respect and trust of the EBR PSS community and the broader community. His appointment will also bring stability and continuity to the district. EBR PSS has an excellent faculty, and to ignore that experience in Adam Smith shows great disrespect to those who are leading. As parents, past and present leaders in our education community and community at large, we respectfully ask that you place Adam in the position of superintendent of our district. This letter is signed by the following EBR system parents, Casey Alfred Senior, Toon Alfred, Noel Allison, Hannah Amoroso, Ariel Barlow, Hannah Birchman, Anne Marie Blank, Fairley Cook Jackson, Emmy Cormier, Nicole Dandiran, Dr. Belinda Davis, Dan Davis, Kimberly Dwin, Jessica Eberhard, Dr. James Finney, Anna Fogel, Jennifer Harding, Kelly Hooker, Sarah Hammett, Lenore Hevy, Mary Juno, Tanya Nyman, Leah Orth, Jasmine Pogue, the following former school system officials, Warren Drake, Dr. Jacqueline Mims, Dr. Press Robinson, the following educators, Kirk Green, Joshua Liebner, Katie Henninger, Dr. Tia Mills, Angela Reams Brown, the following current or former elected officials, State Senator Regina Barrow, Councilman and Mayor Protem Lamont Cole, State Representative Ted James, former State Senator Pat Smith, and the following concerned community members, Daniel Bangwell, Alfreda Tillman Bester, Trudy Bell Wickham, Sue Catchings, Jane Chandler, Janola Duke, Season East Nelson, Jane Goodman, Reverend Gerard Robinson, and Mary Patricia Ray. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Would you please state your name, please?
My name is Mary Patricia Ray, mentioned last in the letter, I'm the mother of a three-year-old in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, and a veteran of Louisiana education policy, which I've been lucky to have a hand in working on for over a decade. I've been to probably 100 different school board meetings as a professional, but I want to appear before you here tonight as a mother, to tell you that if you do not select Mr. Adam Smith as our next superintendent of this district, you will risk losing parents, like me, who are involved in our district and want it to become better, and that is because we are tired. We are very tired of the spin on changes that don't add up, we want consistency for our children, and tonight, you're going to make the most important educational decision for my three-year-old that will be made in his entire educational career. He has an IEP in our system, and he has the potential to be a very successful student in it, but if this administration does not support him, I will have the privilege that I need to be able to leave. I will be one of the lucky few who has access to every educational choice for my child. I want to participate in this school system, and I'm brave enough to come here today and tell you that there are dozens of parents in, just in my school at DuFrock, who will be gone from the system if you do not choose wisely tonight, so if that's your goal, don't select Mr. Smith. If you want buy-in of business owners, job creators, and people who understand education policy in this state, like me, then you will select him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, next? Next.
Good evening. Ah, this thing, I hate this thing. So my name is Carlos Thomas. I'm a retired professor here in Baton Rouge. I'm a transplant from Tennessee. I've been here 20 years and I've had an affiliation with the school system here for the last seven years with two children in the EBR Parish School System. I'm here to voice my support for Mr. Smith. I've never lost for words, but sitting in front of you guys, I am because it's such a passionate issue to me and my family and other folks that I commune with. I want to echo the sentiment of the lady that preceded me. My son was at Westdale Middle for two years, about a year and a half. And we left, we left Westdale Middle because the leadership there was not up to par. It wasn't what we wanted and what we needed for our son, our children. We're going to try again next year with my daughter, who is a French immersion program participant over at Flame. I can't, I can't express to you enough the frustration that I have watching school board meetings and resolutions that come about that really don't, again, lead to the kind of change that this place needs. I've been here 20 years. You know, I understand the politics and I can tell you that, just like she said, that, you know, if the leadership does not meet the needs of families like mine, we will leave. So I really implore you to think very hard, particularly my councilperson, my school member, Ms. Evelyn Ware Jackson, to consider the importance of choosing someone who understands the system here. Baton Rouge is a very, quote unquote, unique place. And we need somebody that understands the politics, that won't be dissuaded from the foolishness that goes on here and will stick it, stick to it in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, from the public.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maria Harmon. I'm representing many parents that we represent in Baton Rouge with Step Up Louisiana. And we're just here to pretty much voice our support for Mr. Adam Smith. He has proven himself as a strong leader in this school district for over 20 years. Even his leadership has benefited at least two school board members' peers when they were in grade school. You know, that speaks volumes when you can really see the progression of their leadership is so longstanding. And I would like to read a statement from our parents in support of Adam Smith. Adam Smith is the one candidate that we know who works with and has the broad support of parents, teachers and support staff. Someone who has worked in our school system, knows this community and has remained committed to it and its children. Someone without the dark cloud of scandal earned or not. Someone who not only knows what the teacher's first line of defense, he supports them and the unions, but actively supports parents, students and community and he is supported back. That someone is Adam Smith, capable, proven and stable leadership. Mr. Smith started the COVID-19 Task Force for EBR Public Schools in the early part of 2020 in response to the pandemic. He had the wherewithal to develop a task force that encompassed parent, teacher, administrative and health professional expertise. He ensured there were food services for children and families during the pandemic. Mr. Smith is a problem solver. Every grievance and challenge that we sought help in, he has been able to come through with solutions. He exemplifies the principles of motivation, dedication and sustainability. His leadership is what our students and teachers need for our school district. Mr. Smith is deserving of a permanent position as superintendent of schools for EBR based off of his accolades alone. We are more than sure that we will have stability with Mr. Smith's leadership. He has been involved in every aspect of this system from starting out as a classroom teacher to assistant principal, then principal, and to a high-level administrator for the EBR School District to now being interim superintendent of schools. Plus, he's a parent of children in the EBR School System. He's not just talking the talk, but walking it as well. With many efforts he's led in his capacity, as an associate superintendent, Mr. Smith has the capability to rally the school district for a common cause. Mr. Adam Smith is a real leader. He's respectful, he's educated, amazingly gifted and loyal. He's a strong leader. He's exceptional, exceeded all barriers. He's accessible to us, he's dedicated, he excludes no one and he is resilient. That's what EBR schools need. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Good evening, board president, board members and the listening audience. I'm Angela Reams Brown, president of the East Baton Rouge Federation of Teachers and Support Workers. As a former 33-year veteran teacher from the East Baton Rouge Parish School System of Special Ed, I'm here to share not only my feelings and thoughts, but those of my 1,200-plus members on your selection tonight of the new superintendent. As I listened to the candidates' interviews and as we read through their qualifications, we realized at that time all three candidates who are the finalists would make good superintendents one day. For us, only one of the candidates is what EBR needs today. Why? Well, we feel that we need someone who is ready to start work immediately. Someone who's familiar with our district and someone who has proven themselves time and time again. Someone who's willing and ready to hit the ground running and know what direction to run to. We need someone who has proven himself to be loyal to this district. And if we think about it and we're honest with ourselves, we've been down this road before where we had candidates who had proven their loyalty to this district, but we passed them over. They left this district and went to other school systems and did exceptionally well. Let's not make that mistake tonight. Tonight, I implore you to put the politics on the side and make a decision that will be in the best interest of our students. After all, we say that's why we're here. We're here to make sure that all of our boys and girls receive a quality education. That starts at the top. So for the East Baton Rouge Federation of Teachers and Support Workers, we implore you to select Adam Smith as our next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Good evening. My name is Valencia Johnson and I'm the president of the East Baton Rouge Parish Association of Educators. And on behalf of the East Baton Rouge Parish Association of Educators, we would like to implore you to choose Adam Smith as our next superintendent. Not only is he a good choice for superintendent, but he's a choice that's already here. He already knows the staff. He already knows the children. He knows the needs of the children and he knows the needs of the district. So we implore you to choose him today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Hello again. Y'all should have been expecting me. How are y'all doing? I'm hoping everybody's staying safe and your families are staying safe. Y'all know we've recently lost one of our teachers. So do y'all mind if I just take a second? One of the teachers we taught with at Westdale has passed. So on this matter, I think y'all know where I stand. I've said it before, Mr. Blue, you are my representative here. It's very simple what I wish. As a parent and as an educator, I want somebody with experience in this district, to know this district. We're not like anywhere else. We've tried before. Bring somebody from out of state. They have this nice resume, plug them in. And some of y'all have been on the board long enough to remember how that worked out for us. Where are they now? I don't see them anywhere. I don't see them anywhere around this district. But Mr. Smith, over 20 years. He's been here. He doesn't want this as a stepping stone. He doesn't want this as a resume patter. Adam Smith is here as part of this community, well over two decades of work for us. Y'all know he wants to be part of this community. He wants to be here. That is important to us. Not somebody who wants to be here two or three years or four years or put a feather in their cap or just turn around a district and move somewhere else. This is his home. He knows the principals. He knows the leadership. He knows the union leaders. He knows the teachers. He knows us. There is no time needed to acclimate himself. He knows as well as anybody sitting on here about how long we served under a DSEG order. He knows the history. He probably has driven all around Baton Rouge and knows the roads that many of us live on and grew up on. He knows our kids, he knows what they need. We need someone who knows the district, who is qualified to be, without any kind of special dispensation from Bessie, our superintendent. We're telling you, the teachers, both unions, parent groups, civic organizations, we're all telling you, we want the same thing. You all were elected for us, to represent us in government. This is what we are all asking you. Adam Smith should be our superintendent. So please, do what you were elected to do. We're all here lined up saying the same thing, public comments saying the same thing. Do what the people are asking you to do. Give us the superintendent we deserve, our children deserve, our leaders deserve, our teachers deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Mike McClanahan. I'm the NAACP Louisiana State Conference President. I've been coming advocating before this board for a number of years, probably about 20 or 30 for various issues. And I think it's real important that I come to you today to speak on behalf of the next superintendent. You know, 20 years flash before my eyes just like that. I turned 56 on yesterday and realized that I have more time behind me than I have before me. And so we don't have a lot of time to get it right when it comes to our future. We can say, look, we'll try it next year and before you know it, that time is lost when we didn't get it right. You know, when you talk about educating kids, they grow so fast and they're so smart. You have to capitalize on what you're going to teach them right now. You can't say, wait till they get to be in middle school and then out. We have somebody right now at Adam Smith that I can truly say is a friend because I fought many wars with Adam. I fought wars with him. I came and pulled him out of his house or out of his school and said, Adam, this ain't right. We went to war and realized we both had the school's best interests and the students' best interests at hand. We became friends. If I look at what's going on in the school system now, we have St. George coming before us. We have a pandemic going on. We don't, we don't have the opportunity to bring somebody in and start training how to look at the politics of Baton Rouge because it's a political town or how to learn your neighbors and all. No, we don't have that kind of time. We have to get it right, right now. And Adam's a friend. I'm biased because we have a lot of scars on us from out here in these wars. If you want to get somebody that's going to continue to push this school district forward, choose Adam. I've had my own family members, my own children educated EBR because I believe in the system. I believe that we can continue to get it right. We can be the number one in the whole state and whole country if we stick together. We can't be sprinting on something that's important as, Adam, if he was good enough to be interim, he was good enough to be interim. He ought to be good enough to be permanent. He showed what he's willing to do, he would make the sacrifices. He probably can go somewhere else and become superintendent. He'd choose EBR. He'd choose to stay. He'd choose to go to your schools in North Baton Rouge. He'd choose to go to all your schools and show you what he's, what he's going to do. He don't make no bones about that he wants this job. And if I were, listen, y'all give me the authority, I'm going to choose him for you right now. I'm going to save all of y'all a little time. I'm going to choose him for you right now and we can move to other businesses. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any more comments from the audience? Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay without?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm Dr. Jackie Mims and I have had the pleasure of serving on this board and serving not only as a board representative for District Four, but also having the pleasure of serving as both a vice president as well as a president. I've known Adam Smith as long as he's been in this district because he started at Prescott and so did his wife. And that school was in my district, District Four. So I've had the pleasure of watching Adam grow. And yes, I'm biased. I'm biased towards Mr. Smith because I have that firsthand knowledge. In addition to that, Adam served as the, on the advisory committee for the Astroma High School, bringing back Astroma High School. So he was there once the school was returned to the district. And with all of his many other job duties and responsibilities, he faithfully served on the advisory committee. And there we worked on a curriculum for Astroma. Mr. Howard, we spent several hours in Mr. Adam Smith's office combing through all of the jumpstart initiatives because what we wanted at Astroma High School was a tech prep program and the state didn't offer such. So initially, they told us there was no such curriculum. So we spent time combing through every page to put together such a curriculum so that our children would have that opportunity. If they desired to go to college, they could, or if they decided to go to work. One of the things that has concerned me and I've had an opportunity to share with some of you is that we say oftentimes leaders, that we want to keep our best and our brightest at home. But yet we will spend time going all across the country looking for the best and the brightest. It's an insult because it suggests to us that the best and the brightest is not here. So I'm out of time or nearly out of time, but I would definitely ask that you would consider Mr. Smith, who knows this district well, who has worked across the district, who you yourselves know that there are times, many times, you've had to call Mr. Smith. I call him the firefighter. Because when there's a fire, that's who you call to put the fire out. And I can name several different superintendents, Ms. Ware, not just Mr. Drake, where you've had to call, that called upon Adam to be that firefighter. Where he had to go in, I was present when he had to go into Glen Oaks High School. I remember that well and many other school districts as well. He is qualified. If you told me that he wasn't qualified and you could prove to me that he wasn't qualified, I would shut up. But you can't tell me that. He has demonstrated himself over and over again. Thank you for this opportunity and I would pray that you would give him serious consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Sims. I'm sorry, Mims.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Devin Wright. I stand, as I have several times before, on behalf of the South Louisiana Coalition for Education. I first want to start by reiterating the fact that I believe it's absurd because of a decision made by our board president that people have to come to stand here despite the pandemic going on because of our public comments not being read from online. Regardless, or needless to say, here we are. For months now, we have watched as decisions have been made that were not necessarily in the best interest of children. This has been done at the federal and the local level. Last year, SLICE called upon you to do what was right and pick a superintendent that was equity-minded, placing an interest of our most vulnerable children as a priority, treating educators as educators as experts, and prioritizing community input. After all, we firmly believe that many of you made promises through your platforms that got you elected to these positions, that were about listening to the voices of communities. And we've been very consistent. That's what we are here again, every step of the way, making sure that the superintendent search brings in the community voice, that we're at the table, not only our issues, but making sure that there's a priority set, right? So that we are together to identify every solution that can move the state of education and banners forward. We are pleading with you to listen to the voices of your community members, to take heed those things that those people have elected you, to sit in these seats, to ensure that their voices are truly heard. Our children cannot afford for a community board and a superintendent that works in silos. In order for equity to truly be accomplished, those who are at the front lines must work diligently with those who are decision-makers to ensure that all needs are being met. We implore you to choose a leader that can make this happen, one that can bring unification to a board that has been divided in so many areas already. Choose a leader that prioritizes community, student achievement, teacher wellness, and equity above all else. It is the common sense thing to do. It is right to help us move forward. We trust that you will do it. We're hoping, in fact, that you will tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? Yes.
I don't, can I adjust the mic, because I'm not that tall? Good evening. When I think about East Baton Rouge Parish school system, I think about one team, one mission, about building Baton Rouge to have a bright and beautiful future. When I think about that leadership and the leader, I think about Mr. Adam Smith. I came before you, once before, and talked about how my vision was blurry if we did not choose Mr. Smith. But our vision has been bright by having Mr. Smith as the interim. We just received report cards. My child made the honor roll, the honor roll during virtual. My child went from being nonverbal to actually telling his teacher the other day, wait a minute. These are milestones that parents like me rejoice about, because I didn't have that vision, and it was not possible without the proper leader like Mr. Smith. When I looked at the resumes, I screamed. I screamed because I saw that Dr. Sito Narcisse tells every school system that he's in it for the long haul, but yet he changes jobs every two years. He's been to nine or ten different school districts in less than a ten-year timeframe. Children need stability. Children need people that actually care. Children need people that are gonna penetrate their heart. Children need people that are gonna make the teachers know that their voices are heard. Children need people that care about their safety. My child knows that Mr. Smith cares. My child knows this so much that when he comes to these school board meetings, he goes directly to Mr. Smith. Even when we had Mr. Drake as superintendent, my child looked eagerly to see Mr. Smith and say, high five. That's pride in being an educator. That's pride in your work ethics. That's pride in actually doing what brings you the most joy. I watched this man not take a day off. I even watched him come up here today and do an interview after being sick himself. That's called dedication and commitment. You're not gonna find that anywhere else. Ms. Marla Gibbs came up here, Ms. Marla came and spoke a good thing about wanting to go to a football game and go shopping. That is not what our children need. Our children need somebody that is gonna focus on their adverse childhood experiences and make sure that they can meet them where they are and escalate them to a higher ground. Our staff, Ms. Ware said during one of the interviews, she wanted to have these voices heard. Mr. Smith came up with a plan to make sure that every voice is heard.
Ma'am, can you wrap it up, please?
Mr. Goday.
I'm sorry, we have a long list.
I know, I'm wrapping it up right now. The one thing that I ask from each and every last one of you, because you know me personally, I ask that you give Mr. Smith the job, not just because he deserve it, but because he is a true leader.
Thank you. Next. We will now roll into doing some of the online comments. And if anyone else in the audience would like to speak after the online comments, you would have that opportunity, if you have not spoken before. So we will begin with the online comments, and I will, Vice President Howard will assist me as we go through these, but I will start off, and it is lengthy. So first is from Angela Thomas Shepherd. Good evening. I have worked in EBR for twenty-eight years. Mr. Smith and I have worked together in different capacities within EBR. Mr. Smith is a successful teacher, is a successful leader, and is the best candidate for superintendent. He knows how the district works well with administrators and teachers. He is passionate about education and is knowledgeable about curriculum and instruction. He is committed to excellence. He knows the inner workings of this district. Please do not bring another person who will leave EBR in three years. Mr. Smith is the best candidate and committed to EBR public schools. I was reading that from the top one, because I had realized that that one had been misplaced. Next is from Suzie McGlon. As a parent of an EBR child, I feel that Adam Smith is the best candidate for superintendent. He is a veteran of a very school system that he would be, has been representing, and has the best interest of the children and community at heart. He showed this by immediately implementing at-home delivery for the district, a problem which should have been addressed from the beginning of the school year. Adam Smith is doing an exceptional job as interim and should have his position made permanent. From Marlon, Myron Cusib, we need stability and consistency. From Darrell Hurst, Adam Smith has demonstrated the leadership ability to provide transformative change for EBR. You're only a good leader if you have the support of your subordinates to implement your plan. Adam has the support of the school administrators, teachers, and support staff. As a community leader, I lend my support and ask the board to do the same. Elizabeth McWilliams, Adam Smith for superintendent. Jennifer Hogan, I support Adam Smith. Cassandra Beverly, again, EBR needs to stop going outside, being used as a stepping stone and look at home. Adam Smith knows what EBR needs. There's no time for someone to come in and first learn the system. He knows the system. Let's stop wasting time. It's not fair to EBR stakeholders. Dylan Rayburn, as a citizen invested in the success of EBR schools, I feel the need to express my support for Adam Smith for superintendent. From Ursula Parkinson, Adam Smith is the only choice for EBR. He has the experience, the qualifications, and the heart to lead our school district. I speak both as a parent of an EBR student and a teacher in this district. From Mitchell Provencal, Adam Smith has been part of this community and school for years and is the only viable candidate. From Ashley Rodrick, in support of Adam Smith. From Sidney Burks, as a parent and community member, Adam Smith is the best choice. Kendrick Smith, the best person for the job. He knows the people of EBR schools, and he cares. Good luck, win-win. Derek Wheeler, please support Adam Smith as the newest superintendent. He has proven his leadership in the district for a long time, and it is time for him to take the lead. From Vivian Pislata, as a sped employee, I would like continuity and someone that understands special ed for both myself, my child, and my student. From Mary Trigg, as an EBR teacher, I support Adam Smith and think he has done an excellent job of leading us thus far through difficult times, and I think he should be our new superintendent. Mr., Vice President Howard, could you please take over for a while?
Give me one second.
Okay, I'll keep going. From Mary Siggers, I support Adam Smith as the new superintendent for the EBR school system. He has already proven his ability to lead the system. From Neva Buckus, dear members of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, I am writing to you to express my support for Adam Smith to be the next superintendent of East Baton Rouge Parish. As a young professional who was recently married, I hope one day to have children who attend our city's public schools. While Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Narcisse have impressive resumes, I firmly believe that Adam Smith's leadership and vision is what is best for our city and students. His commitment to equity and knowledge of the inner workings of our school system is unparalleled. He is highly respected by educators in our district, which signals that his appointment would unify teachers and provide stability and continuity to our school system. I hope you will give him your full consideration and that you listen to your community, particularly your educators, who are calling for his appointment. Thank you, Neva Buckus. Okay, you got it?
Yes, sir. Elaine Harris, I'm writing to express my concerns over the selection of the next superintendent. By watching the interviews and doing additional research, I was able to come up with the following that I hope each school board member takes into consideration. Dr. Narcisse has moved repeatedly from one job to another. He has not shown any long-term consistency, even though he promises such in interview after interview. He is currently in a middle-level administration. He is not second-in-command. Tamale and controversy have followed in his wake at each job he has taken. He appears to be very similar to Dr. Bernard Taylor, which should be of great concern to everyone. He cannot be certified as superintendent in the state of Louisiana because he has taught less than five years. Dr. Narcisse is not the correct person for this district. Sincerely, Elaine Harris. Colin Kissel, as a parent of two students in the EBR public school system, I ask you to please vote to make Adam Smith the new official superintendent. Thank you for your time. Anna Fogel, in hoping to organize for the community letter in support of Adam Smith, I was struck by the ease of this request of support. The respect and support of this man is consistent across the board. There is not one red flag or concern with his appointment. He will bring stability and consistent leadership. There are zero unknowns with him. I am confident he will shine as our superintendent and bring a fresh new vision that is grounded in his decades of experience. Jennifer Harding, I'm writing to urge you to appoint Adam Smith as the permanent superintendent. Mr. Smith has a proven track record of commitment to our children and improving our schools. Mr. Smith has a vision for EBR schools that is inclusive of the needs of all of our students, and he brings with him the knowledge and experience of having served at almost every level of our system. We're facing some of the toughest challenges our community and our school system has ever faced with. We need a leader that can provide us with the stability and continuity necessary to meet the moment. Mr. Smith has already hit the ground running with this board and trusted him to assume the position of interim superintendent. Now is the time to shift gears and set our district, now is not the time to shift gears and set our district back. I am asking you to continue to place your trust in proven leader who has been loyal to the district, our educators, and the families of EBR schools. The community charge has been made clear. Please listen to us and appoint Adam Smith. Jassen Poe, during this pandemic, Mr. Smith was a constant supporter of our schools. I had the great fortune to work on the COVID-19 task force that he led, and I have spoken with him on a few occasions with personal navigations of EBR schools with grade school and high schooler. I recently drove my first grader from the school system due to virtual schooling being too much to manage her ADHD. However, after speaking with Mr. Smith, I have more faith in the system being able to provide the support she needs. Mr. Smith has so many ideas for the future of EBR schools, and now he has the opportunity to implement them. Learning, if you want new blood with fresh ideas and an unbiased opinion, you will like what Mr. Smith actually has to offer. His ideas are fresh engagement and will lead our system into the new realm of learning. He isn't limited by bias from previous experience. Listen to the community and vote for Mr. Smith to be our next superintendent. Hannah Birchman, as a parent of the children in EBR school system and a former EBR teacher, I support his decision to have Mr. Smith, excuse me, serve as our student and teachers. Many say he has been in the system and wasn't successful, but it's only been a few months that he has been given the opportunity to lead. We have yet to tap into what Mr. Smith has imagined and what wants to reimagine for our schools. He holds years of experience as an educator within our schools, the kind of experience and skill set that should be prioritized when leading a public school system. He knows our students and our community. As a member of the community, he has vested interest in the success of our schools. Let him lead us. Susan East Nelson, these comments are solely on behalf, on my behalf, my own behalf. I've had the unfortunate experience of serving this board as a communications director under Dr. Taylor. I only bring up this terrible member as a means of relaying the risk of bringing in someone else who ends up acting like him. I'm not saying that any of these candidates would be like him. However, there is only one that we know for sure is not like Dr. Taylor. Adam Smith is universally respected and applauded throughout the community for his willingness to work with the people to create positive outcomes. Moreover, Adam Smith is well-known for his gentle nature and listening ear. Today, the children, teachers, and staff of this community deserve stability and healing from COVID-19 crisis, and the only candidate, Adam Smith, has proven to us that he can provide the right kind of leadership to bring everyone together to help the district thrive. Respectfully, I thank you for the consideration of our next superintendent, Adam Smith. Verdi Gray, please pick a superintendent that will be here for the long run to better equip our parish and our kids. We don't need change of administration every three to four years. We need some of out-of-the-box thinking, not the same administration and thinking that comes from EBR year after year. Make the best decision for all of our kids regardless of their political or socioeconomic status. Brenda Christopher, now that you're down to the top three candidates, it is obvious that Dr. Narcisse is the best candidate. In fact, he has more experience than Dr. Towns, or lastly, Brown, put together. He has experience and track record of turning around failing schools. Dr. Narcisse is the best choice to lead East Baton Rouge Parish school system to greatness. Jessica Stroup, I am the parent of two East Baton Rouge Parish schoolchildren at Flame and West Del Milda, and I strongly support Adam Smith to be our next superintendent. He is wise, respected, and deeply cares about our teachers, staff, students, and families. He has what it takes to lead our district. Please support Adam Smith. Jane Grenier, as a community member, I have watched Mr. Adam Smith grow as an educator and leader. He understands the students, parents, and staff in this district. He has also, he has always been open to listen to make needed changes in the school system, even the difficult changes that some people may have been against. He is dedicated to the students in this district. He is a person that we need to run the East Baton Rouge Parish school system during the challenging times we are currently experiencing. He has proven, he has proven that he is an excellent leader, and he can make the changes that we need. I urge you to select Mr. Adam Smith as our next superintendent. Mr. Goday.
From Caleb Dangerfield, as a recent graduate of East Baton Rouge Parish school system, it is important to me that you, the board, get this leadership position right. Students in EBR need someone that is compassionate, that is passionate, caring, and understanding, someone that puts politics aside and focuses on what is needed in the classrooms. For so long, students have been last on the list. It's time for that to change. Today, I am asking, I am asking today for my classmates for bold leadership. Dr. Narcisse is the man for the job. He has done the work we need in EBR. From Tara Doyle, I am a parent of two children in EBR public schools. Please appoint Adam Smith. Mr. Smith has such, has been such a great support for East Baton Rouge Parish school parents throughout the years. He has a clear vision for EBR schools that is inclusive of the voices that make up this school district. Having someone like Mr. Smith would mean, would mean not having to wait on a learning curve while also delivering a healthy shift of change that EBR schools are searching for. We ask the board to listen to the voices of the community that make up the school system and vote for Adam Smith as our new school superintendent. From Carolyn Carter, I am raising two of my grandsons that are in East Baton Rouge Parish school system. It is extremely important to me that the next superintendent would put systems in place to ensure that my grandsons will be successful and graduate with a top-quality education. Dr. Narcisse has the experience, vision, and a proven record. He already has a plan to move the district forward. Hannah Amorosa, I am a graduate of EBR public schools, am married to a graduate of EBR public schools, and have two children currently attending EBR public schools. I care enough about the system to entrust my children to it, even when other choices are available to me. For our system to be successful, the ones actually using the system should be happy. When those people are happy, they bring others in. I am happy with Adam Smith. I have had an opportunity to engage with him personally on several occasions, and I am nothing but impressed with his calm, deliberate leadership that places our children first. He has demonstrated his commitment to the school system through years of service at every level. He listens to his stakeholders and responds with capable professionalism. Right now, we need this continuity. I am so excited to see his vision for our school system given a chance. Please vote for Adam Smith to be our next superintendent. From Joel Troxclaire, this board now is an opportunity to be bold and innovative by choosing a top-quality superintendent. We can no longer continue to do the same status quo. It is time for change, innovation, new ideas, and proven tactics. The only candidate that you can have, that can fill this position is Dr. Narcisse. Regardless of what anyone says, the community wants change and stability, someone that will give our students a quality education. The only candidate that can do that is Dr. Narcisse. From Erica Malone, I urge- From Erica Malone, I urge you to please install Adam Smith as superintendent of our schools. He has the experience, skills, and leadership we need to guide through this challenging time. In his brief period as interim superintendent and throughout his career in the school system, he has proven time and time again that he is invaluable to our community. From Louis Davis, as a father of two boys in the EBR public school system, I ask you to please vote for Dr. Narcisse for superintendent. Thank you for your time. From Zephaniah Dangerfield, I graduated in 2018. I would like to see the incoming students have a better chance than I had, so therefore I support Dr. Narcisse. From Joy Phillips, I am a parent of two and support Dr. Narcisse. From Lena Edwards, I am a grandparent and I support Dr. Narcisse. From Aline Walker, I am a parent of two and I support Dr. Narcisse. Alexis Cockerham, I support Dr. Narcisse. Gail Jones, I am a grandparent of four and I support Dr. Narcisse. From Janay Rucker, I am a parent of two and I support Dr. Narcisse. From Diamond Fields, I am a parent of a daughter and I support Dr. Narcisse. From Josh Mayoral, I am a father of an EBR public school first grader, and I urge you to choose Adam Smith for superintendent. The EBR system is already hard enough to navigate, and I watched how Mr. Smith has made that navigation much easier. I also recently found out that Mr. Narcisse recently bought some property in Maryland, and that along with his short stints in different systems makes me concerned with his commitment to our district. Lastly, Dr. Shepherd seems like a great fit in our district, and I would absolutely back her if Mr. Smith was not in the running. Thank you. Michelle David, I am a parent of four children that have gone through the EBR school system. I am support of Dr. Narcisse because he has the experience of running a district like ours. He has proven results by turning around failing schools. All four of my children have attended failing schools. As a parent, it is time for this board to give me better leadership for my children's education. My children deserve better, and I feel that Dr. Narcisse has what it takes in order to provide them with a quality education. From Bill Fontenot, as a parent of children who have and do currently attend EBR public schools, I would like you to strongly consider Adam Smith as permanent superintendent. We need a leader who knows and understands our students and families. Adam Smith knows how to lead our district and can make the changes that need to be made. His primary concern has always been our students. Bill Fontenot. From Rosalyn Allen, I am an early childhood provider and a grandmother of one school-aged child, and in order for my children and grandchildren to receive an outstanding education, I believe that Dr. Narcisse is the best candidate for the job. From Nicole Danduran, as a member of PSN and a mother of two students enrolled in the EBR school system, Adam Smith has our support to lead our schools. He listens to parents now and has invaluable knowledge of the peculiar challenges our district face, faces, and he is ready to jump in, right in to implement his plan for success. Please vote for Adam Smith as our next superintendent. From Christina Pogue, I am a mom to a high schooler, and this past year has been tough. I have concerns around the quality of my son's educational experience and want to make sure he has good leadership in place to demonstrate what hard work can do for a young man. Mr. Smith has shown what I teach my son all the time. Put in hard work and good things will come to you. Please choose Mr. Smith as the new superintendent of East Baton Rouge Schools. Thank you. From Angela Bradford, please vote for Adam Smith. He is a champion for our kids and for our schools and will serve our community well. We need the consistency and leadership he offers. From Joshua Lebner, I want to voice my strong support for Adam Smith to lead my son and our family as superintendent of the East Baton Rouge School System. We value his commitment to education equity, and because he knows us so well, he has an enormous personal stake in our future. I must say, as a public high school teacher for over twenty years, I value Mr. Smith's pedagogy of inclusion and his understanding of how children learn. His ideas, ideals, and solutions reflect our family. I would love to see Baton Rouge move forward, more move as, I would love to see Baton Rouge move towards more teacher-centered education that allows for greater freedom for our educators while keeping in mind that we are all one community. With Mr. Smith, there is no pitting one group against another and no finger on the scale that puts other students in harm's way. I believe that too often, schools sued by the most powerful moneyed interests and not enough care, concern, and commitment intention has been paid to others in our neighborhood. Mr. Smith will do so. From Karen Clark, EBR is ready for a new innovative leader who has worked in high administrative levels and successfully turned around entire systems. It was clear from the town hall with and the interview of Dr. Narcisse that he is focused on our students. Supporting students, making sure students have the best and most enriched experience possible, and making sure students have a voice in their own district. I support Dr. Narcisse because he brings experience, knowledge, innovation, expertise, and leadership that our students need. From Fairleigh Jackson, I thank you for your thoughtful consideration in choosing our next leader. I am writing in support of Adam Smith. He has proven to be a thoughtful, communicative professional and has the experience to serve our children and educators.
Joy Phillips, I am a parent of two amazing and bright children. As a parent, I want to ensure that they are given their best shot at success. I have done my research and have found nothing but, nothing but excellent things when it comes down to leadership and optimism of Dr. Narcisse. I see Dr. Narcisse as a bold leader who is capable to do what needs to be done for our children to succeed. It is time for change, so let's start by choosing the right candidate, which is Dr. Narcisse. From May Warren, prior to the town hall meeting, I knew nothing about the different jobs that Adam Smith has done in the district. I'd always heard great things about him, but I was not sure if he could understand what the kids in my community go through each day. After watching the introduction that he gave at the town hall meeting, I now know that he does understand my community and the kids in my community. He understands them because he grew up just like they did. He is example of our, of what our children and hard work can do. He will be an excellent leader for the school system and a role model for our students. May Warren. Caleb Holmes, when it comes to the choice of the superintendent, it is very clear. Adam Smith has the capabilities and genuine connections with the EBR community. Dr. Narcisse is not, and let me be very, very clear, is not the right selection. Every school system he's been involved with has led to scandal and decline. And Dr. Narcisse tries to pass this off as implementing tough reforms when in reality is nothing more than what it seems to be personally dubious gains. I implore you all to not vote for Dr. Narcisse as superintendent. Our public education system is worth more than the vapid and fancy words. Our public school system, our public schools, teachers, staff, and most importantly, students deserve a superintendent of the people, by the people, and for the people of East Baton Rouge Parish. Lynn Stubbs, I'm writing today to encourage the board to appoint Dr. Sito Narcisse as the next leader of EBR schools. For, for too long, we have been okay with too many of our most vulnerable students sitting in struggling or failing schools fighting for resources. As a mother, I am not okay with that. Every parent should be outraged by that. EBR is losing young families to surrounding districts or private schools at an alarming rate because leadership has failed to address the equity issue. The district needs new energy and vision if we hope to build a better future for all students and families, not just the lucky few. We don't need more of the same. Dr. Narcisse seems to be the candidate who understands that the system should serve students and families. He has a positive strides for kids in his past roles, and he has been open and connected with the community. That's why I'm asking for your support of Dr. Sito Narcisse. Megan Shane Dean, I'm a parent and educator in EBR. I'm writing to express my support for Adam Smith as the EBR school superintendent. I'm confident in choosing Adam Smith because he has a wealth of experience. He listens to the students, parents, and teachers, and he, and has the respect and support of the community members across the district. Furthermore, it is no small matter that his appointment will bring stability to the district, which is desperately needed at this time. Kimona Hogan, as a parent, I had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Narcisse and Adam Smith. Dr. Narcisse was not impressive, and he used a lot of words to say nothing. He assured it by scandal and district does have, and that our district does not have time or resources to take on this foolishness. Adam Smith, however, was transparent and took accountability when addressing me directly as a parent. While I may not control, well, while I may not have control over the board votes for our, our next superintendent, I do control of who I vote for on the board. School board members, stop selling us out and do the right thing by voting for the most competent candidate, Adam Smith. Deborah McLean, as a parent of a child in an amazing magnet school and teacher at an improving EBR elementary school, I am keenly aware of the discrepancy in opportunity and resources. Giving our public dollars to private organizations only exaggerates the inequities, inequalities. Adam Smith stands by the original purpose of the public school system. In the pandemic, general public schoolchildren and their families have suffered more than the most, and now more than ever, we should be focused on supporting those families. Adam Smith understands this and has my support. Madeline Junie, Juno, please vote in support of Adam Smith for EBR superintendent. Ainsley Bradford, please consider Adam Smith for the next superintendent of East Baton Rouge Parish schools. Last time that this system showed progress is when this board hired Ms. Placy from within. Thanks. Lacey Rangers, I have six children in the East Baton Rouge Parish school system ranging from elementary to high school. I am tired of all of the broken promises, miscommunication, and my children being failed in their education. I'm asking you all to vote for Dr. Narcisse as our next superintendent so that my children will finally have a chance of success. From Phyllis Darrensburg, I would like to, I would like the superintendent to be the person who has students of, students above all things first. Next, I would like the superintendent to give the teachers what is needed to get our students all on the right track. He or she has a lot to carry on with this job and needs to, needs to be done. I'm sure the voting panel will take that into consideration. Thanks. Jocelyn Kelly, at the beginning of this superintendent search, I ask all of you not to give us anything less than Leslie Brown. You did not choose Adam Smith then, and by choosing him now, it will be less than Leslie Brown. Dr. Narcisse's experience is far greater than Les, than Leslie Brown, so therefore this is the perfect choice. Do right by our students in the EBR and choose the best candidate. Jennifer Carlwell, I am writing in opposition to hiring Mr. Narc, Mr. Narcisse for superintendent. His record shows that he has not stayed in any position in the education field for very long. We do not need someone who will view our school system as a stepping stone to bigger, better things or who doesn't have the fortitude to stick it out during a difficult transition. And we know that between St. George Charter School, Rachel Tensions, et cetera, we need someone who is dedicated to be here for the long haul. The candidate might have been under your noses this whole time. Ben Owens, Baton Rouge is so often focused on finding the next new thing while overlooking the greatness at our doorsteps. In Adam Smith, we have a homegrown leader with a passion, experience, loyalty, and understanding of the unique needs of our children and educators necessary to move our district forward. It makes no sense to bring someone in when we already have the leadership we need in place. Please appoint Adam Smith as a permanent superintendent. Barbara Davis, I support Dr. Narcisse. He has the experience to make all schools in EBR great. He will focus on our traditional and low-performance schools. Under the current leadership, those schools have been left behind. We need a leader that will give each and every one of our students exactly what they need. In this town hall, he said he will make sure that students that are struggling will get the resources they need, and those that are excelling will also continue to excel. Scott Cornelius, I support Adam Smith for superintendent. Mr. Smith's experience not only as an administrator but as a classroom educator is indispensable in the continued improvement of primary and secondary schools in Baton Rouge. His long experience in the school system at different levels is unmatched in the recent history of superintendents and would bring in excellent, fresh insights to central office. Tanya Naman, dear East Baton Rouge Parish school board members, I wholeheartedly support and ask that you appoint Adam Smith as the next superintendent of East Baton Rouge Parish school system. His track record is exemplary and unblemished, and he enjoys extraordinary support from immediate stakeholders, immediate, EBR public school parents and teachers. We need someone like Adam Smith, a proven leader with a strong understanding of the laws and policies peculiar to Louisiana to guide our system through these troubled times. Please respect the wishes of teachers and parents who overwhelmingly support Adam Smith and name him East Baton Rouge Parish school superintendent. Respectfully, Tanya Naman, parent of East Baton Rouge Parish school students. Yolanda Braxton, I will begin by saying I am disturbed with many from the Teachers Association to some public officials. Our system, our school system needs an overhaul, a major change. Our kids have been failed for far too long. We need someone who is not biased and whom can come in and make the necessary changes that our system needs. People want to talk about cliques that are on our school board, but hell, cliques are within our whole school system. What we have has not worked. It is time to refresh and regroup. David Beach, dear members of the school board, I ask that you select a candidate with the best skill set and most experience for the superintendent position. The person you select should be able to make the difficult and necessary decisions without impartially and, and having an open mind to all viable solutions that will ensure all children in our community have access to an excellent education. Thank you, David Beach. Linda Edwards, Dr. Narcisse is an outstanding candidate for the position we as parents desperately want filled. We need someone who is not only qualified to be the next superintendent but is also passionate about pursuing the work that needs to be done in order to meet the needs of our children. Joel Troxclaire, I support Dr. Narcisse and look forward to him, what he has planned as the next superintendent. Noel Allison, please select Adam Smith as the superintendent. I am a parent of four East Baton Rouge Parish school students. I highly value the work he has done in our district, and I am excited about the prospect of him as the next superintendent.
From Laverne Semino, as a taxpayer of Baton Rouge, I support Adam Smith's candidates for superintendent. A testament to our school system is the fact that Mr. Smith's children attended EBR schools. Mr. Smith knows our strength and weaknesses. With full autonomy, with full authority, he can hit the ground running and make necessary changes. My hope is it reduces the number of central office staff to increase the numbers of people working directly with children. Too many chiefs and not enough Indians. From Olivia Montgomery, I am writing to urge you to select Adam Smith as our next superintendent. He is respected by teachers and employees of the school system. He has been in command for some time already. Selecting him will allow him the opportunity to implement change immediately and will prevent any time lost in the transition. He also has years of experience in the school system and knows its needs better than other candidates. He supports our community, and the community supports his appointment to this position. From Zachary Wigger, as the son of a school teacher, I write to request you appoint Adam Smith as the next superintendent. He knows the community well and has demonstrated commitment to leadership in the school system. He has a proven positive track record at schools he has worked at and will make a great superintendent. From Louis Whitner, Dr. Narcisse is my pick for superintendent. He has more experience than Adam and Dr. Shepherd. He will come here and create change for our students. This is something we have been asking for. I am asking you to vote for Dr. Narcisse as our next superintendent so that he can do what is most important, and that is create change. From Patricia Smith, I am writing to support Adam Smith to be selected as the next EBR superintendent. After reading the research given on all three, it's important to recognize the learning curve the two from out of state will have. Adam has been in charge as an interim since Drake departed and then Mrs. Brown. He knows the system, administrators, teachers, and principals all associated with the system. I know he will make BR, BR, EBR proud as the next superintendent. From Christina Vincent, as a former EBR educator and a current EBR parent of two students, I can say without, with doubt, Adam Smith is the most qualified and best choice for permanent superintendent of EBR public schools. I could go into all the reasons why he should be the choice of the board, but please know that he is, that he is already the choice of the people, parents, faculty, and staff. He has a lifetime career dedicated to our students and community. To pull in an outsider is a slap in the face of the educators and the educational system of EBR. Smith has a proven record of dedication to this community of students and parents and stakeholders, one that is not proven by any means by the other two finalists. Please vote the vice, the voice of the people by choosing Adam Smith. From Loren Phillips, I am a parent of two bright children. As a parent, I want to ensure that they are given their best opportunity to succeed. I have done my research and have found nothing, I have found nothing but excellence when it comes down to the leadership of Dr. Narcisse. I see Dr. Narcisse as a bold leader who is capable, capable to do what needs to be done for our children to succeed. It is time for change, so let's start by choosing the right candidate, which is Dr. Narcisse. From Lexi, Lexi Shop, please select Adam Smith as EBR superintendent. He has demonstrated record of excellence in EBR schools, and he is committed to this community. We need someone who has worked in the system and knows about this community to be leading our schools. From Joshua Hajak Barafin, Barafini, I support Adam Smith. I like that he supports public schools instead of being a stooge for charter school special interests. From Barbara Williams, I believe Mr. Smith to be the best candidate for the job. He's been here, he knows the needs and is quite capable of handling them and moving EBR forward in a positive way. From Daniel Bagel, members of the board, I would like you to consider Adam Smith for superintendent. We are in desperate need of someone who understands our community schools and the politics associated with the position of superintendent. Mr. Smith has served as assistant superintendent for many years. He understands what it takes to move our system forward. Mr. Smith may not be the choice for the business community, but he is the clear choice for many of the parents, students, and community advocates who make up the fabric of the school district. Please give them a voice tonight. Tonight, many of you will be conflicted with your vote because of what particular interest groups want for the school district. Let's send them a clear message that their opinion will not dictate what you say on the board. Tonight, I ask that you give your vote to one of our own and allow him the opportunity to show what he can do. Please vote for Adam. Please vote for Adam Smith. The community is watching. Thank you. From Yemaine McClanahan, I fully support Mr. Adam Smith for the hire as the next EBR superintendent. Not only is he qualified, but his character speaks volume, and he is well-respected in the community. I trust he will serve as an exceptional superintendent and hope you will as well. From Kristen Harding, I think familiarity with the community and the school system makes Adam Smith, the interim superintendent, the best choice. That unqualified candidate should be eliminated immediately. From Nikki Davis, please vote for Dr. Narcisse as our next superintendent so that my children would finally have a chance of success. From Caitlin Bradford, as a product of EBR schools, I am proud to say I know Adam Smith well and have been under his leadership on many occasions. He is the epitome of a leader, and I believe everyone within the school system, both students and educators, will greatly benefit should he be chosen as the next superintendent of EBR schools. From James Davis, Dr. Narcisse is the most qualified candidate for this position. Please do not let me as the community down, as my children, as the students of EBR are down. It is time for this board to do what is best for children and make Dr. Narcisse our next superintendent. From Afrin Johnson, Adam Smith will benefit the position. He is what is needed in the school system. From Chris, Casey Meyer, as a parent with two children in the EBR school district, my family and I support Adam Smith as the next superintendent. Mr. Smith has invested interest in the community with years of service at the EBR school district. Whenever we needed to discuss an issue, Mr. Smith was there to listen and discuss solutions. It would be good to see the district promote from within instead of bringing in an outsider. Let him continue to do the job that he is currently doing. From Storm Matthews, hi, I wish I could be there tonight, but the numbers are just too high. I am in my fifteenth year of teaching in this district. I can look at a teacher or a leader and know how, know if they have what it takes or if they don't. I have watched Mr. Smith rise from teacher up through the ranks, and there is no one in the system I trust more than him. Mr. Smith is the only candidate who is certified to be a superintendent. Dr. Narcisse is not even qualified to gain this certification. Narcisse's hiring would also require hiring six-figure academic, six-figure salary academic officer, not to mention that he is riddled with scandals in every state he has been employed, all six. Please vote for Adam for our students, teachers, parents, and community. I thank him for his service to our children and teachers for all these years. He is our only choice. Dr. Mary Leach, it is my opinion that the next superintendent has extensive experience with school districts comparable in size to EBR public schools, have an MBA or an MBA certification, and is skilled in establishing relationships with frontline teachers and employees, not beholden to the school board, establish relationships with community members and organizations. I also think that an open line of communication with district employees to be established. Best results happens when communication is top-down, bottom-up, and horizontal. The next superintendent should have a clear vision that employees can own and embrace. Lastly, whoever is selected should be required to read Good to Great. From Yura Pauling Widling, please appoint Adam Smith for superintendent. EBR would be great under his aegis. From Quinn Jackson, Adam Smith is a good man, but I personally feel that EBR needs change. Darrellan Freeman, it is my hopes that the board will recognize the need for change in this district. Our students' future are sele, depending upon selecting the right superintendent. Mr. Smith does not represent the change that is needed. Thank you. From Marvin Evans, I am a product of EBR schools and have two sons currently enrolled in the school district. My investment in the school district is beyond most of your elected board members. Our students, educators, and stakeholders deserve a superintendent who is not only qualified via education and certification, but is committed to serving the needs of all entities in this system. Adam Smith's body of work for the past twenty-four years is evidence-based and the only database-driven decision before you this evening. Please vote for the best interests of our students, teachers, and families. Send a message to EBR Parish that we value hard work and commitment of our EBR Parish School System educators. From Rochelle Scott, I implore you to select Mr. Smith as our next superintendent. Mr. Smith has a true devotion to our district and love for our students. He understands equity on a level that many leaders in the past have not. I believe if given the opportunity to serve you, you would see that his innovation, creativity, and delegation would be second to none. When placed as the youngest principal in the lowest-performing elementary school, Mr. Smith made it a point to show up after hours at my campus just to have a conversation. He wanted to see how I was doing and feeling. For Mr. Smith, it was bigger than my talents and skills. It was bigger than personal gain. It was to ensure that on a personal level, I was okay and offer support. That has resonated with me for the last five years, even when others in leadership did not support me. Mr. Smith is ready to usher this district into the desperate turnaround needed. Please do not, please do the right thing tonight and place Mr. Smith as our superintendent. From Michael Williams, please be mindful of the message you're sending to me, to students like me with nominating Mr. Narcisse, that we can be in competition with someone for a job that they are not even certified to be in when you are. That we can go to work in the same place for nearly three decades and still be looked over when we are the most deserving of the job. He should have been a finalist and superintendent in the first go-around rather than leaving and finding someone better. He still stayed. Make it right. From Aaron Dangerfield, vote for Dr. Narcisse as our next superintendent. He has the experience, vision, and a proven record. From Corey Delahusse, it would be great to have Adam Smith as our superintendent as he has proven his experience, humility, honor, and respect for all and passion for our community. We need not look any further than our own community. Adam Smith knows our families, our teachers, our administrators, and more importantly, the needs of our children. Adam Smith has taken on the hard task and has worked with all parties to ensure our kids are his top priority. I need to now refresh, are they, while I'm refreshing my list, are there any in-person members who would like to speak?
Ms., Mr. Goddard, there's more.
Yeah, I know.
Good evening. My name is Emily White, and I'm a parent of four kids in the EBR school system, as well as a member of PSNBR. I'm here to speak personally in favor of Adam Smith for superintendent. He has the direct knowledge needed to hit the ground running, and I'm encouraged by the plan he has put forth. We need an excellent manager in this position, one that surrounds himself with capable people who can get the job done. We desperately need the stability and calm demeanor of Mr. Smith. He already has the buy-in from the community. You can see this in the number of thoughtful, in-person, and online comments he's received. Now, as a member of PSNBR Education Committee, I'd like to say that our members had a chance to speak with each finalist and hear their vision for EBR schools. We are proud to share our endorsement for Adam Smith to be selected as the next EBR school superintendent. Mr. Smith has our full support because he has been such a, a great support for EBR parents throughout the years. He has a clear vision for EBR schools that is inclusive of the voices that make up this school district. Having someone like Mr. Smith would mean not having to wait on a learning curve while also delivering a healthy shift of change that EBR schools is searching for. We ask the board to listen to the voices of the community that make up the school system and vote for Mr. Adam Smith as our new superintendent. In closing, I took time to go through the online comments and noticed that Mr. Smith received over sixty-seven comments of support of him being superintendent, and Dr. Narcisse received around thirty-six. In addition, every in-person comment was made in support of Mr. Smith, and all comments include EBR Parish School System parents, educators, advocates, small business owners, and elected officials at the state and local and local level, and former EBR school board members. This shows that Mr. Smith has the support of our school commi, community and should be the next EBR school superintendent. To make any other decision would be going directly against the wisdom and wishes of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other in-person comments at this time?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Daniel Edwards. I'm the principal at Wildwood Elementary School, and I know many of you, and I thank you for your service. But I didn't want to leave tonight without standing in support of Mr. Adam Smith. And I detailed my reasons for doing so in an email that I sent to each one of you this morning. And to those of you who had the opportunity to read it, thank you. I'm just gonna be transparent tonight. I'm really not interested in a new T-shirt with a catchy slogan because somebody new comes in under the guise of promising change and doing what's best for students. Okay, I'm not really interested in reading someone's new one-hundred-day plan, making promises to us when so many before have come in under that guise and left us all as principals and teachers and staff members, still doing the hard work that we're committed to doing each and every day. Mr. Smith has proven himself over a course of many years. And sometimes I think the reason why, uh, people may be reticent is because they just haven't been given the opportunity. So I encourage you tonight to do the right thing and give Mr. Smith the opportunity, continue the work he's been doing. I think it will energize the district. I think I speak for many of my colleagues. You know, the word says you can have a lot of talents and abilities, but if you don't have love, you're just a loud, clinging symbol. And in this district, we've had a lot of loud, clinging symbols. And I'm ready to invest in someone who loves us, loves our kids, loves our family members, and we love him back. So I encourage you tonight to select Mr. Smith to be the next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments before we go back to online? Seeing none, I stopped at Patterson? I stopped at Patterson?
No, you need to read.
Read Patterson, okay. So this is from Ann Patterson. I am writing today in support of Dr. Narcisse. I am the grandparent of two young children in East Baton Rouge and a retired educator. Today's vote is about selecting a leader for East Baton Rouge that can lead and inspire and unify the community in working together to improve schools for every single student in East Baton Rouge. I want my grandchildren to benefit from the experience of someone who has been outside of Baton Rouge, who can bring expertise, experience, and innovative ideas that can support educators in their practice of helping students learn and succeed. I appreciate Mr. Smith's service, but our students need and deserve Dr. Narcisse and what he can bring. He is qualified. He is proven. He can unify. He can drive positive change for students. From Corey Fitzgerald, quoting from an article in the Prince George County Parents Maryland Blog, Sita Narcisse, Doctorate of Education, was the Associate Superintendent for High School Performance in Prince George County Public Schools before he left for Tennessee. He left in the middle of the night with Maritza Gonzalez to become the new chief of schools in the metro Nashville public school system after engaging in misconduct within PGCS, PS. Is this who we want as our next superintendent? From Tommy Stewart, I am writing for your support for Dr. Narcisse for superintendent. I read his and the other two candidates' resumes. It impressed me that during his time in both DC and Nashville schools, he has raised grad rate, grad rate, grad rates, ACT scores, and AP exit exam scores. I attended a now-failing school and had to put my, pull my kids from one. I don't want to have the same pattern repeated for my grandchild. We need new leadership, new eyes, and proven leadership that will make all schools in this district better. Please vote for Dr. Narcisse. From Irma Jackson, I give this comment in three aspects. First and foremost, as a parent, as a parent, I want a superintendent that I will see in the schools and is available to hear my concerns and that I feel acts in the best interest of my child. This is Adam Smith. As an educator, I want a superintendent that is in the schools, familiar with the school improvement plan, is knowledgeable of matters within the schools when asked, and actually knows more than half of those in the district by name. This is Adam Smith. As the president of the EBR Associated Professional Educators of Louisiana, I want a superintendent that listens to us and allows us to participate in the well-being of the district. This is Adam Smith. From Joel Johnson, our district deserves a better leader. They may be tough decisions to make, but I am one of the many students in East Baton Rouge Parish. When we get a leader who will fight for us and make better decisions. One of your candidate, Dr. Narcisse qualifies more than the other two. Someone with a new, someone new with a fresh, who will come in and make the difference as needed. I am a high school student, and I can see that he is the best fit. Why can't you all? From Macalee Hall, Dr. Narcisse is the best candidate to lead our district to a better future. It amazes me how y'all say you want something homegrown, but Adam Smith is from Chicago. From Jude Delahusse, I hope this board comes together and supports Adam Smith. Adam Smith has done more for community and for our kids for several years. My children have had the pleasure of knowing him while they were in middle school and now as their superintendent. Unlike most on the board, he is a man of his word. I believe Mr. Smith will work with us to ensure we get a name on our school, and unlike Mr. Lannis, he will be truthful, honest, and he will never use his race for his own agenda. Lacey Johnson, Adam Smith has been working for East Baton Rouge Parish School System for twenty years, and we have been a failing district for over twenty years. If he becomes the next superintendent, what will that say for our future then? From Galene Mack, good evening. I have been involved with EBR schools as a parent, service provider, and advocate for under-resourced youth for over thirty-five years. I participated in the interview process last round and watched snips of the interviews for this round, and now the question-and-answer session tonight with Mr. Smith. I am convinced that we have the East Baton Rouge Parish, we have the superintendent East Baton Rouge Parish needs to lead the district to the next level. Mr. Smith has a passion for youth and experience for excellence that is built on the foundation of relationship. I strongly support his strategies. We owe the youth of this district the best, and in my opinion, Mr. Smith is the best. Board members, I encourage you to vote for Mr. Smith as the next superintendent for the EBR School District. From Stefan Wink, dear board holding our children's lives in your hands. Having been involved in education for twenty years, having raised and educated five children, and currently studying for a doctorate in education, I am entirely convinced that the right path to take forward is continuing the path we are already on and make Mr. Smith our permanent leader. Thank you. From Landry Scott, Dr. Narcisse plans to stand up and make change. For all the failing schools, he wants to turn all of them around. That means no more of our kids below the competition, below the completion towards the future. The kids is our biggest focus. From Andrew Walter, I have been listening to the comments from the audience. It is so amazing how the representative from the Teachers Union talks about how Narcisse isn't qualified, but you support failing teachers inside our schools that aren't qualified. So let me tell you how that works, if that is the people you fight for. From Jermaine Williams, I hear everyone saying how Adam Smith has been in the district and knows the system. That is the very reason he is not right for the job. Please hire Dr. Narcisse. It is time for change. From Anita Augustus, as a retired pre-K teacher and president of EBR PAE Teachers Union, Adam Smith has always had my back and my babies, too. During this pandemic, Mr. Smith worked very closely with me to help ensure the safety of our children and teachers. This was not a new phenomenon with Mr. Smith, as he has always been who our students needed to be. That is because his goal is to be for students who he needed as a student. I will refresh one more time. From Demetrius Lyles, the only educators who are supporting Adam Smith are the ones who are not employed at the underprivileged schools. It is time for all children in EBR to be treated fairly. Dr. Narcisse should be our next superintendent. From Shane Stewart, as an educator and this parent for many years, it has been my pleasure to meet Mr. Smith on many occasions. He always remembers my name because he is part of this community. He cares about the outcome of our students and has a stake in its success. Please, for our students, parents, teachers, and administrators, choose Adam Smith. From Sydney Johnson Brown, I am so tired of the Teachers Union coming to the "I am so tired of the Teachers Union coming to the school board meetings acting as if they are fighting for their children, but instead they are fighting for their jobs and their best interests. The union is fighting for a failing superintendent, just like they are fighting for failing teachers." From Shirley Brown. "I truly believe the school board will be unified and better forthcoming if Dr. Cito Narcisse becomes the next superintendent." From Jackson LaFleur. "My child attends a magnet school in EBR where he has had no science teacher, four math teachers, and three social studies teachers in one semester. This alone is one example why we need someone who doesn't know the normal EBR way. Please hire Dr. Narcisse. The change is necessary." Are there any other public comments? I was refreshing. Are there any more public comments while I'm refreshing? Okay, after this, I will be closing public comments. From Marcus Johnson. "East Baton Rouge Parish, please pick the most qualified and best superintendent. Do not pick someone who is just from Baton Rouge and someone that you want. The kids matter." And I have no more comments online and no one waiting to speak in person. So the public comment portion of the meeting is closed. So with that, we will go back to the board for comments before we take the roll call vote. Are there any comments? I need to pull my back up. I don't have my teams up. Are there any comments from the board? I do not have my teams up, so you can wave at me. Any other, last chance, any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we are now ready to commence the... I'm sorry? Oh, Ms. Bernard.
Thank you, President Godey. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I want to first thank Mr. Smith and the other finalists who interviewed. And I also want to thank all of the members of the community tonight. I really appreciate your showing up and showing support here for Mr. Smith, and I share your sentiments. I can't imagine that there is a stronger leader in the school district to lead us, to lead our students, our faculty members. And so I thank you for showing up and expressing your support for him. I've heard from several of my constituents, some were in online comments, but some were in phone calls and text messages. And they all said that they support Mr. Smith. So I don't have any problem or any issue in supporting Mr. Smith. I wouldn't have either way, anyway, because I just know Mr. Smith, I know his character, I know his reputation. He's a scholar. He has impressed me. I've gotten to know him better over the last year through COVID and the last couple of years. But even before that, and even tonight, even more, every time he speaks, I learn something new about him that I didn't know before that impresses me. And I'm just proud to know him, and I'm very proud of him and of our district for supporting him to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Ms. Collins.
I would just, again, like to say why I'm supportive of Mr. Smith as our next superintendent. He has a proven record here of moving our schools. Here. He knows how to move our kids here. He spoke during the town hall about how he had elementary schools that moved. He's moved schools here. He spoke about how he moved Glen Oaks High and Scotlandville High, the largest gains that they've had since the time he's done it. No one else has made gains at Scotlandville High or Glen Oaks High the way our homegrown talent has made. People can talk a good game, and you don't know what they are truly about until they come. You just genuinely don't. You don't know what they can genuinely take credit for. Because this man has been here, we know. He has our trust. He's proven himself. And while I do not disparage Dr. Narcisse, excuse me, at the end of the day, the truth is, he is technically less qualified. We would have to, according to Louisiana statute, not just hire him, we would have to have someone to supplement his experience because he cannot get a license in the state of Louisiana. So who then would be his CAO? Do we expect this man, who's been serving and doing the work and putting out fires over the years and has shown himself, do we expect him to suck it up and say he wasn't good enough for the job, but he got to supplement somebody else? We can't... That's why I support him. And that's why so many people were willing to speak up for Mr. Smith. And with that, I'll close, but I think it was very important to make sure that people realize the facts or that Adam Smith is currently qualified today to be superintendent. Today. He has the superintendent license right now. We would not have to apply for a waiver. We would not have to apply for someone else to supplement his experience because Adam Smith has it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Vice President Howard.
Thank you, President Godey. So I just, too, want to thank everybody for coming and sharing their sentiments about the candidates and Mr. Smith in particular, for the people who spoke tonight. I would be reluctant to sit in and listen to some of these great things about Mr. Smith and not say that we, as a district, do have some challenges. Myself, as a board member, I have experienced some of the toxic culture and environment that exists within the East Baton Rouge Parish school system. I've had several meetings with Mr. Smith to address some of these concerns that I've had as a board member with the toxicity that exists in East Baton Rouge Parish. So I appreciate and applaud the positivity, but I just wanted to be very known that I haven't even decided up until this point where I'm gonna vote. But if I do support Mr. Smith, there are some issues that need to be pushed, and some doors that need to be knocked down, and some tables that need to be flipped in this district. So I don't care, you know, about the... You know, he's been here a very long time, and I appreciate Mr. Smith, and we've had some tough conversations over the years. But I just want the community to know that even if Mr. Smith is selected tonight, there are some tables that need to be flipped and some people that need to go somewhere else in order to see the full and reach the full potential in this district. So we just need to be very clear about the conversations and honest about the conversations that we have if Mr. Smith is given the opportunity. Because just because Mr. Smith given the opportunity, I just want to speak to people who are complacent and comfortable in your positions. Even if Mr. Smith is the next superintendent, this board member will be pushing to knock some tables and flip some chairs.
Thank you. Board Member Lannis.
I must say I share a lot of the same sentiments. Tonight, hearing all of the comments for both Superintendent Adam Smith and Dr. Cito Narcisse, I know that whoever we do pick is gonna be right for our students. But I will say this, it is time to heal in this community. We always say we want change, but every time change comes knocking at our door, we turn the other way. This is not an adult issue tonight. This is a student issue. Because every time I think about what our district needs, I think about students that fell through the cracks, like Percy Heard, 16-year-old kid. Came straight through our school system, and now he's in parish prison for second-degree murder. I think about kids like that because I came from the same areas as them. And I'm not even trying to insert myself. But as a product of the school district, nothing has changed. Since I was in middle school, I've seen no change. So I share the same sentiments as my colleague. Whoever is picked, accountability will be upheld in a way that we've never seen before because we are losing too many kids. When 50% of your kids are not graduating from high school and you don't find that to be a problem, that's an issue. Whether you're a student, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a principal, or whether you're sitting on this board, or whether you are the superintendent of the school system, that is a problem. 48% of our kids are graduating with degrees with no credentials. They're unemployable. Who thinks about them? And that's what my vote is gonna reflect tonight. I thank my constituents, I thank everybody that came to the mic. But whatever we decide to do, it is for the betterment of this district because we cannot, we cannot move forward doing the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Lannis. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I would like to make one comment. First, Board Member Bernard touched on it, but I'd like to follow up on it a little bit more. First of all, I don't have a clue if she's watching or not, but I would very much like to thank Dr. Marla Shepherd for participating in our process. You are a very qualified candidate, and I wish you all the success in the world. You have done great things, and I'm sure you will continue to do great things. And then the two candidates that we have up for now for selection, again, I thank you very, very much for the time and effort that you've put into this. Both of you, again, are very qualified candidates, and I, again, wish you all the best success in the future. And so with that, seeing no other comments from the board, I think it is time for us to vote. Madam Secretary, would you please do a roll call vote by district?
District one, Mr. Blue.
Cito Narcisse.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Narcisse.
District three, Mr. Howard.
Adam Smith.
District four, Ms. Collins.
Adam Smith.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Dr. Narcisse.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Dr. Narcisse.
District seven, Mr. Godey.
Dr. Narcisse.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Adam Smith.
District nine, Mr. Tatman.
Adam Smith.
Four votes for Adam Smith, five votes for Cito Narcisse.
Dr. Cito Narcisse is selected as the next superintendent for East Baton Rouge Parish. This will now, this special meeting is now adjourned, and we will immediately begin, or we can take a few-minute break, and then we will begin with the Committee of the Whole.
Welcome back. We are going to begin the Thursday, January 14, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting. Before we begin, I will read the notice and instructions. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center, PDC, meeting room space. Once that the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All the audience members will be required to wear masks at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The Committee of the Whole meeting, scheduled for January 14, 2021... The committee of the whole meeting scheduled for January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, immediately following the town hall that we just had, a link to watch will be on board docs. A period for reading public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action item is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on their agenda item in board docs and submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. Online comments are available for public review. At this time, Madam Secretary, would you please conduct the roll call?
District seven, President Goday.
Here.
District three, Vice President Howard.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Atlantis. District four, Ms. Collins.
Present.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
District nine, Mr. Tatman.
Present.
We have a quorum. Our first item for, to receive as information only, we will receive an update from Mr. Adam Smith.
Thank you, Vice President Howard. I would like to share, our district-wide Professionals Development Department, we had an event entitled, "Let's Go: Transporting Students in the Twenty-First Century Learning." This event was held January fourth, two thousand twenty-one. There were forty-four training sessions that occurred throughout the day. Trainings were attended by both instructional specialists as well as non-instructional staff throughout the district. The training was conducted by district-level instructional specialists and curriculum vendors. There were a total of one thousand seven hundred and fifty participants in the breakout session and a record number of continual learning units that were awarded to our teachers and district staff. The day ended with a culminating activity at the Baton Rouge Metro Airport where Captain Barrington Irvin and his team provided hands-on demonstration to over one hundred in-person and virtual learners. The Health Advisory Committee met earlier this month and plans to meet again as soon to continue addressing concerns, review case data, track community spread, and monitor progress throughout the pandemic. The district is incredibly grateful for the team of dedicated doctors, nurses, and medical professionals who so generously donated their time to ensure EBR remains safe and healthy through all time. I've received many requests about the vaccination for teachers. At this time, we do not have a timeline when that vaccination will be administered to our, our teachers at this time. The Louisiana Office of Student Financial Aid, Southern University Shreveport, and Baton Rouge Community College are hosting a Q and A session to help students and their parents fill out the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two FAS application. The sessions will be held January fourteenth, seventeenth, and twenty-second. Please contact your child's local high school for further information. And finally, I would just like to notify the general public that all schools and offices will be closed January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one in observance of Dr. Martha Luttekeen Holliday. Thank you, Vice President Howard. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Further any questions? Seeing none on the board, we will move to our next item for consideration. Our next item for consideration is item D one. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the following grants. Albertson's Nourishing Neighbors Grant at the amount of $25,000 to feed local families in need during the crisis. T-Mobile Project, ten million and the amount of $1,247,500 to award family hotspots and the connectivity for one year. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Ms. Bernard. Second by Ms. Collins. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Seeing none, are there any comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary. I will go back to the board. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary.
Please vote. Motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item of consideration is item D two. It is professional service contract. It is a consideration of the request for, for approval of a contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Louisiana Business Incorporated Professional Educators Leadership Academy in the amount of $66,000 for professional development. Finding source is Title II. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Tatman, second, second by Mr. Blue. Are there any questions or comments from the board for Dr. Bentley? Seeing none, any comments from the audience? Back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Please vote. Motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is item D three. It is contracts charter schools. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following contracts, charter school contracts. Empire Char, Inspired Charter School, January twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-one. Inspired Charter School, July twenty twenty-one, June twenty, to June twenty twenty-four. CSAL Community School for Apprenticeship Learning, two thousand sixteen. Community School for Apprenticeship Learner, CSAL Elementary, July twenty twenty-one. Mr. Shamlin, if you could just give us a brief update about what, what occurred with these contracts?
Yes, Mr. Howard. This is for charter school contracts. As you know, these schools have already been authorized by charter by the board. At the board's request, we're bringing these contracts back for approval. The first two contracts with Inspire, one is designed to cover the period of time from this month until June thirtieth, which is the remaining time on the original charter. At, at school was renewed in December. The second contract reflects that renewal and will go from July one to June of two thousand twenty-four. The second two contracts with CSAL, the first is in recognition of CSAL's original school authorized in two thousand sixteen. That's CSAL Middle School. The second one is for the most recent school authorized by the board, which is CSAL Elementary School, and that begins July one, two thousand twenty-one. All contracts basically track our new charter policy. The only deviation, major deviation, is the two thousand sixteen school was authorized prior to our charter policy being passed, and that school was given a term of ten years. And that's the only real difference. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shamlin. Are there any questions from the board? My system is not working, so just buzz me down if you have a question. All right, seeing none, we will go to the public comments. Dr. Finney. I'm, I'm sorry, we don't have a motion yet. So moved by Mr. Blue and second by Mr. Tatman. Sorry about that. Mr. Tatman. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know that most of you are probably worn out after the superintendent's search, so I will save most of my detailed comments for next week. But these are four completely separate contracts describing different situations. They don't belong on the consent agenda and they don't belong lumped together. When you approve a new charter or you authorize a renewal, you are authorizing the negotiation and the execution of a charter agreement. I don't care what your policy says, statute is clear. There must be a charter, which is an agreement, and it must have certain characteristics that are covered. It's my position that none of these four satisfy statute. Furthermore, when you approved a renewal for CSAL's Middle School in two thousand sixteen and they did not have a contract in place on July first of two thousand sixteen, and they didn't scamper to get one, they should have planned on not opening in the fall of two thousand sixteen. You can't keep spending money when you don't have a contractual basis. You shouldn't give them three and a half years to keep spending money and then say, oops, here, let's, let's whip this thing through and give them another six and a half years. It's time to flip some tables, Mr. Howard. I appreciate your comments. You need rock-solid charter agreements on all of these. Inspire should never have opened again in the fall of two thousand eighteen without a signed contract that met statute, yet they were allowed to open. Whatever you do to cover the next six months with Inspire is fine, but don't approve an agreement next week that doesn't perfectly satisfy the statute that covers what a charter must cover and is enforceable. I mean, you tell bases in their contract, you've got to have a certain number of poor kids, and they have absolutely no intention of ever following that. So either you're in charge of your charter schools or it's just a, a spigot through which our tax money goes to private hands, mostly out of state. CSAL should never have been allowed to open if they weren't able to negotiate a contract that everybody could live with. You don't give them a pass and say, oops, here, have another two and a half years. Let's whip this thing together, have it as weak as you can be. And furthermore, the two schools that we haven't mentioned, they need to be on your agenda next week to close them down at the end of the year. If Medership High School and South Baton Rouge Charter aren't even willing to sign these weak template agreements, shut them down, turn off the spigot, have some control over the charter schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no additional public comments, we'll go back to the board. Any comments from the, I mean, from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary.
Please vote. Motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is item D four. It is the University Terrace Contractor. Consideration of a request for the authorization for staff to advertise, accept low bids, accept meeting specifications, and make the award of a contract for construction of a University Terrace Buchanan Elementary School. A new school is specified in the A Plan to Improve Facilities Technology, Discipline, and Compensation in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. The plan is revised through February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, or reject any or low bids just in accordance with Louisiana Public Law, Louisiana Revised Statute, Chapter thirty, Title Thirty-eight, Chapter Ten. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for item D four. So moved by Mr. Goday, seconded by Mr. Tatman. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll move to comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience? There are no comments from the audience. Back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
There it is. Ms. Dyson? Got it?
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is item D five. It is the Policy, VCAD, GBRIB, and GBRIBC. It is a consideration of a request for the following, request of the approval of the following policies, SPECAT, teleconference remote participation in school board meetings, GBRIB, sickly, and GBRIBC COVID-19 emergency leave. I'll entertain a motion at this moment. So moved by Ms. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Tatman. Are there any questions and concerns from the board? Mr. Shamlin, have a comment? Seeing none, we will go to comments from the audience? Are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
Ms. Dyson, is it up?
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is item D six, ITEP Guidelines. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the Revised Industrial Tax Exemption Program Guidelines. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Dyson. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, comments from the audience? Seeing none, we do have one public comment. I am glad to see that you guys are addressing guidelines for granting ITEPS. For the most part, your guidelines seem reasonable. I have two points that I would hope you will consider. The LED provides a very generalized return of investment sheet, but it's not actually doing cost-benefit analysis. In order to determine whether granting and exemption benefits to schools in the long run, please have a cost-benefit analysis done, or better yet, get vocal with LED when they try to provide that information. There's a loophole for granting an ITEP to retain jobs in a business that will close a result of not getting the ITEP. What type of proof will you ask for when you know that this is really the case? It is easy for a corporation to threaten to leave if they don't get their way. Fear of losing jobs is a strong motivator, but once the tactic is used successfully, you open the floodgates for every corporation to use the same excuse for needing exemptions. That concludes our online comments. Are there any additional comments from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary. I'm sorry. Ms. Dyson.
I just wanted to say that I am in favor of this as it aligns with our Metro Council and so that businesses can know in coming to East Baton Rouge Parish in Louisiana that there is some consistency across our Metro Council and our school board. So I think, I think that the whole program can run smoother with consistency here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Are there any additional questions from, comments from the board? Seeing none, Madam Secretary.
Oh, we had a problem. Please vote.
Madam Secretary? Thank you. The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is item D seven. It is litigation. Consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and the Madam Blake Wingate versus Artish, RT Montgomery, East Baton Rouge Parish School System, and Brooklyn Insurance, suit number six forty-three eight seven, section twenty-six, nineteen JDC, Parish of East Baton Rouge, and to provide for related matters. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Goday and seconded by Ms. Collins. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, comments from the audience? Seeing no comments from the audience, I will refresh our public comment board. Seeing none, back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
The motion carries. Oh, sorry, I thought you said it carries.
Mr. Goday. Now the motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item of consideration is item E. It is an announcement of school board meetings. January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one was today's Committee of the Whole. Our next regular board meeting will be held on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at five o'clock PM at the Professional Development Center. The Committee of the Whole meeting will be held on February fourth, two thousand twenty-one at five o'clock at the same location, the Professional Development Center. At this time, I move that this meeting is adjourned.